Me gustaría dedicar una oración esta tarde al señor que creo que conocí hace 35 o 40 años, Omar Rodriguez, que quería estar con el Señor en la Eve de Navidad. Así que me gustaría dedicar mi última oración esta tarde a él. Padre Dios, te agradecemos por el pasado y las cosas buenas que han sucedido durante este año. Y te pido, Señor, que continúes dándonos a Cameron County las cosas que has predestinado para este gran condado. Te agradecemos por la liderazgo del pasado, te agradecemos por la liderazgo del futuro. Y pedimos que las cosas como los huracanes y otros desastres se mantengan alejados de nuestras fronteras, se mantengan alejados de nuestras costas de condado. Pedimos siempre seguridad en nuestras calles, en las carreteras y en los caminos, especialmente para los jóvenes. Ayuden a nuestras familias a quedarse juntas, a trabajar juntos, a orar juntos. Y finalmente, Señor, te pido ayudarnos todos a compartir un poco de tu amor con alguien nuevo para 2007. Guarda nuestra cárcel y a todos los empleados de la sheriff Lucio. Ayude a esos hombres y mujeres a ver qué está mal y no a ser repetidores. Y oramos que el tribunal de los comisioneros tenga un gran año el próximo año, con nuevas cosas para Cameron County. En nombre de Jesús oramos. Amén.
Amén.
Bueno, antes de empezar quiero decir algunas cosas. Este ha sido mi último encuentro y quería hacer una declaración de partidumbre, supongo. Ha sido un placer trabajar con ustedes durante los últimos cuatro años, Edna, seis años, David, cuatro años, John, en dos meses, Sophie, y diez años, Pete. Y usted sabe, este tribunal de comisioneros más que cualquier otro tribunal de comisioneros con el que he servido ha actuado más como un equipo que creo que he visto ningún tipo de organismo legislativo actuar como un equipo. La gente que se sienta aquí ha tomado todo el concepto de acordar y desacordar hasta el nivel más alto posible. Han habido muchos temas que han venido ante nosotros. Siempre ha habido una discusión saludable sobre muchos temas, pero una discusión muy respetuosa entre los miembros del tribunal de comisioneros. Ha resultado en que la gente se involucra en la actitud de dar y tomar hacia el gobierno que ha previsto absolutos la mayor parte del tiempo y generalmente ha resultado en un 99% del tiempo en un voto unánime. Es porque creo que todos nosotros, incluso cuando nos desacordamos unos de los otros, tenemos un respeto mutuo entre nosotros. Un respeto mutuo que, en mi opinión, está fundado en nuestra creencia de que todos tenemos el interés del público en mente. Y eso es lo primero y lo principal que nos guía y nos motiva mientras gobernamos aquí. Y eso es algo que se debe嘉獎, y usted sabe, he visto otros organismos legislativos, otros tribunales de comisioneros de condado, comisiones de la ciudad, asuntos escolares, he sido miembro de muchos de esos diferentes organismos, incluso tribunales de apelos donde hay un panel de tres jueces. Pero nunca he visto tanto camaradería en un organismo legislativo como este. Y te嘉獎 cada uno de ustedes por tener esa visión de cuán importante es trabajar juntos por el bien del público. Ha sido un placer trabajar con ustedes, trabajar para el público, trabajar con ustedes y trabajar con el público. Quiero dejarles esto. Una de las cosas que me di cuenta durante esta campaña fue que las elecciones hacen dos cosas. Lo primero que hacen es dejar que el público decida quién va a liderarlos. Ellos electan o no electan a sus líderes. Desafortunadamente para mí, decidieron no elegirme. Pero la otra cosa que hacen las campañas que creo que es tan significativa, en mi opinión, es que dan a esas personas que están buscando liderar la oportunidad de salir al público mientras buscan sus votos y escucharlos y ver qué está pasando en la comunidad que están buscando representar. Les da la oportunidad de hablar con la gente sobre qué les está preocupando, cuáles son los temas importantes para ellos, y de hablar con mucha gente sobre un conjunto de problemas que pueden enfrentar, en particular los problemas que enfrentan a las familias en una comunidad. Y cuando tienes una campaña prolongada, como hice este año y el año anterior, te da aún más oportunidad de hacerlo, de visitar a la gente de tu comunidad, en las colonias, en las ciudades, de todos los caminos de vida, hombres y mujeres, personas mayores, personas de mediano edad, jóvenes, personas de diferentes profesiones, y ver con tus propios ojos qué está realmente sucediendo en tu comunidad. Creo que esto es crítico en todo el proceso electoral para que puedas entender qué estás entrando y qué esperan de ti y qué supuestamente debes hacer cuando entras en el cargo. Más que cualquier otra elección en la que he estado involucrado, y no recuerdo cuántas he tenido, pero he tenido numerosas, esta elección creo que me dio la oportunidad de ver todas las cosas en nuestro condado que tenemos una obligación de lidiar con. Y la tristeza que siento sobre hoy no es sobre dejar esta mesa porque, usted sabe, tuve la oportunidad de servir durante mucho tiempo y el público me dio esa oportunidad y estoy muy agradecido por esa oportunidad, pero eso no es lo que se trata. Se trata de tener la oportunidad de hacer las cosas que harán mejor a tu comunidad. Y la tristeza que tengo es que al menos en el rol de juez de condado o miembro de este gran organismo, no voy a poder hacerlo porque hay tantas cosas que están ahí que deben hacerse. Pero lo que me hace sentir, creo, confiante de que no es un día tan malo para mí es que dejo atrás a cuatro personas con las que tengo una enorme cantidad de respeto, que creo en la mayoría de los aspectos piensan mucho como yo, se preocupan mucho como yo, sufren mucho como yo, sienten como yo sobre las personas que representan, y han tomado su trabajo como miembro de este tribunal de comisioneros a un nivel diferente, a un nivel que creo que no has visto en ningún otro estado en el servicio al público. Porque este tribunal de comisioneros y estos miembros, todos los cuatro de ustedes, son personas que creo que ven su trabajo como no simplemente construir caminos, o no simplemente construir un tribunal, o no simplemente asegurarse de que los problemas tradicionales de condado se resuelvan, pero has llevado a un nivel diferente. Creo que has entendido cuán importante es para los miembros de esta comisión empezar a mirar los problemas y acercarse a los problemas y atacar los problemas y resolver los problemas que no son problemas tradicionales que enfrentamos en el tribunal de comisioneros. Y que has tomado una decisión como miembro de este tribunal de comisioneros de decir si hay algo que afecta a nuestra comunidad que necesita ser resuelto y no hay nadie más haciéndolo, entonces siento que es mi obligación hacerlo y haré todo lo posible para tratar de resolverlo. Y he visto eso de todos los cuatro de ustedes en un conjunto de muchas áreas diferentes. Y creo que eso me encanta. Dejo sabiendo que al menos cuatro de ustedes que estarán aquí tienen esa actitud, tienen ese sentimiento, tienen ese fuego en su alma para querer asegurarse de que esos problemas que necesitan ser abordados por este tribunal de comisioneros los abordan. Uno de esos problemas que espero que este tribunal de comisioneros realmente no olvide y lo convierta en prioridad porque nadie más lo está haciendo, el gobierno federal no lo ha hecho, el gobierno estatal ha sido desagradable en su enfoque hacia ello, las ciudades no son capaces de hacerlo, y no hay suficiente interés privado sectoral para resolverlo, y esa es la área de la atención médica. Realmente creo que tenemos una obligación como miembros de este tribunal de comisioneros para empezar a tratar de mirar el tema de la atención médica, la atención médica para los pobres y la atención médica para los pobres trabajadores, la atención médica para aquellas personas que no tienen acceso a la atención médica, la atención médica para aquellas personas, aquellas familias, aquellas madres y padres que permanecen despiertos por la noche preocupándose por si o no van a poder llevar a su hijo a un doctor, a un especialista o a un hospital si sufren de enfermedad, o sus propios miembros de familia que no son niños si sufren de enfermedad porque no tienen seguro de salud, porque no se califican para la medicina, porque no tienen el dinero para poder pagar por ello. Sabiendo que en la mayoría de las circunstancias, si no tienes dinero o seguro de salud o se califica para un beneficio federal, no obtienes la atención médica que necesitas. No puedo concebir estar en esa situación. Usted sabe, si agradezco a Dios todos los días por las bendiciones que tengo, son las bendiciones que me ha dado Dios y todos los miembros que están detrás de esta mesa de que no tenemos que enfrentar eso con nuestros hijos, con nuestros miembros de familia, con las personas que somos más cercanos. Pero el 60%, el 70% de la población en el Río Grande Valley se enfrenta a eso, y es algo, en mi opinión, que no deberíamos permitir continuar, que si el estado no está dispuesto a intervenir para resolver este tema, que tenemos que empezar a trabajar en tratar de encontrar soluciones a ello. Es una tarea masiva que abordamos, pero es una que creo que alguien tiene que hacer. Y si el estado no está dispuesto a hacer el compromiso, ni siquiera el gobierno federal, ya sea por sí mismo o en colaboración con las comunidades locales, entonces tenemos que tomar eso. Y si el estado o el gobierno federal, y espero hoy porque el Congreso ahora se ha convertido en democrático, que verás iniciativas que van a estar más orientadas hacia tratar de acercarse a esos problemas, si requieren colaboraciones para poder resolverlos, espero que ustedes vean esto como algo que es un problema de condado, que el gobierno de condado debe estar involucrado, que el gobierno de condado debe abordar, que es lo mismo que las carreteras y los edificios, es lo mismo que administrar tribunales, es lo mismo que asegurarse de que la gente obtenga los servicios tradicionales de condado, porque es el número uno del problema que enfrenta a nuestras familias en Cameron County, pero no las carreteras y edificios, no administrar tribunales, no nada más. Ese es el número uno del problema que enfrenta a nuestras familias en Cameron County. Usted sabe, hay vehículos ahí fuera, ya sea el distrito de servicios de salud o otros vehículos para poder resolverlo, y va a costar dinero, pero el dinero que gastamos como comisioneros, como miembros del tribunal de comisioneros, aunque es el dinero del público, gastarlo en la atención médica para hacer nuestra comunidad más saludable y permitir a la gente tener la seguridad de asegurar que sus familias tendrán la atención médica necesaria es justo tan importante como construir sus carreteras y edificios, en mi opinión. Es así, es así. Y espero que cuando me vaya, eso es probablemente uno de los problemas que más arrepiento haber sido capaz de lograr, pero espero que cuando me vaya que al menos los cuatro de ustedes vean que es algo que necesita ser un problema de condado, necesita continuar siendo acercado y tratado para ver si pueden resolverlo. El segundo problema, creo, nuevamente, que no es un problema tradicional de condado que creo que es importante para nosotros poder continuar trabajando es el tema del desarrollo económico y las diferentes formas en que las comunidades pueden involucrarse en eso. He vivido en el Río Grande Valley durante 54 años. El día en que nací, el Río Grande Valley era, si no la comunidad más pobre, la segunda comunidad más pobre en todo Estados Unidos. Yo tengo 54 años hoy y sigue siendo lo mismo. La tasa de desempleo oscila alrededor de 12 o 13%. La gente que está empleada, la mayoría son desempleadas. Los salarios aquí son entre los más bajos en el país. Tenemos una actitud entre nuestras corporaciones de desarrollo económico que estamos atrayendo a las empresas a venir aquí porque tenemos salarios bajos y no hay trabajo organizado aquí. Y no creo que eso sea algo que deberíamos promover, en mi opinión. No te vas a sacar de la rutina atrayendo a las empresas y industrias que te pagarán salarios bajos. Hay muchas cosas que el gobierno de condado puede hacer en colaboración con las ciudades y el sector privado para poder ponernos en un mejor postura, para poder asegurar que seamos más fuertes económicamente, que todos los proyectos de infraestructura que juntos hemos tratado de desarrollar en esta comunidad son ejemplos de eso, pero hay más a eso. Tenemos la capacidad de influir en las iniciativas de entrenamiento de trabajo en esta comunidad, de mirar el desarrollo de trabajo que no es tradicional de trabajo con nuestras instituciones educativas locales para que nuestros hijos se gradúen de nuestras instituciones educativas con habilidades y no necesariamente al colegio si ellos electan no hacerlo. Eso los hace más atractivos como un trabajo para una industria que va a venir aquí y ofrece trabajos con habilidades a la gente en esta comunidad y pagar salarios mejores y ofrecer condiciones de trabajo mejores y beneficios con mucho más seguridad. Ese es el tipo de iniciativa que tenemos que trabajar y convertirse en creativos. Y nuevamente, ese es un arrepentimiento que tengo que no he podido lograr. Creo muy fuertemente que tenemos que trabajar para hacer nuestra comunidad más económica y no podemos confiar simplemente en las iniciativas de nuestras ciudades para hacer eso. Tiene que ser en un condado urbano que es tan pobre como el condado de Cameron, que tiene la liderazgo progresista que tiene este tribunal de comisioneros, y creo que veo a todos los cuatro de ustedes como progresistas. Quiero decir, creo que es probablemente por eso que el 99% del tiempo todos los cuatro de ustedes votarían con este liberal demócrata, porque creo que creen de la misma manera que creo que podemos hacerlo mejor, podemos usar el vehículo del gobierno de condado para lograr mejores resultados para nuestra comunidad y tenemos la obligación de hacerlo. Y finalmente, creo que tenemos que continuar asegurándonos de que los servicios que proporcionamos a esta comunidad son más que suficientes. Tenemos algunos huecos graves en los servicios. Primero y lo primero que tenemos, en mi opinión, es un gran hueco en nuestros problemas de seguridad. No tenemos suficientes personas de la policía. Creo que si doblas el tamaño de las personas que son oficiales de patrulla, ya sea el oficio de constoantes en el departamento de la sheriff, todavía no estarías satisfecho con las necesidades de las comunidades rurales de Cameron County y las comunidades urbanas. Creo que tenemos que proporcionar los instrumentos y los vehículos a nuestra comunidad de la policía para que puedan proteger mejor al público. Esto no es el condado de South Texas rural donde vivimos. Esos tipos que vienen tienen AK-47s. Tienen armas mejores a veces que nuestra propia comunidad de la policía. Tienen más, muchas más personas que nuestra gente. No solo están poniendo al público en riesgo, también están poniendo a nuestra comunidad de la policía en riesgo. Usted sabe, es algo que, nuevamente, va a costar dinero, pero nuevamente, el dinero que estamos gastando es el dinero del público y es el dinero gastado para el bien del público cuando empiezas a proporcionarles la seguridad que necesitan. Pero hay otros servicios que deberíamos, creo, proporcionar al público que son importantes, que pueden no ser servicios tradicionales de condado. Creo que en la área de asegurarnos de que trabajamos hacia tratar de lidiar con los problemas de pobreza en nuestras comunidades, tenemos que empezar a trabajar en los problemas de la vivienda. Usted sabe, una de las cosas que vi dramáticamente durante esta campaña, y lo había visto mucho durante los años que he estado aquí, pero cuando saltas y entras a estas colonias y vas de puerta a puerta y estás tocando las puertas y ves las desagradables condiciones de vida en las que viven grandes segmentos de nuestra población, es inaceptable que eso esté sucediendo. Ahora, usted sabe, dice, bueno, usted sabe, va a costar millones y millones de dólares para nosotros poder abordar esos problemas. Bueno, usted sabe, ese es otro problema que creo que si tienes una iniciativa de condado, una participación en el condado, que puedes formar colaboraciones, no solo con las ciudades y con el gobierno federal y el gobierno estatal, sino colaboraciones con el sector privado como condado para empezar a lidiar con esos problemas. ¿Quién está lidiando con los problemas de vivienda? Si hay un problema que es segundo solo a la atención médica, que nuestros pobres en esta comunidad necesitan ser, que necesitamos resolver o necesitamos trabajar para resolverlo, es la vivienda, porque vas a estas comunidades a través de Cameron County y tienes estas pequeñas casas de una o dos habitaciones donde tienes seis, siete, ocho, diez personas o más, y no es correcto que esto esté sucediendo en Estados Unidos de América. Nos preocupan nosotros mismos por construir mejores caminos y problemas de derramación en las colonias, pero ignoramos el problema de la vivienda. Ese es un servicio que tenemos que empezar a desarrollar como condado y convertirnos en innovador para tratar de acercarse. Usted sabe, creo que hay otros problemas que implican los servicios que podemos proporcionar a la comunidad que podemos empezar a mirar para hacer el trabajo que hacemos producir mejores resultados para las personas que representamos. Cuando Anne Richards murió, os conté una pequeña historia y la he contado muchas veces durante la campaña sobre su llegada a un centro de cuidados adultos en La Jolla, cuando estaba corriendo por el Tesoro Estatal en La Jolla y bajando con materiales, sin ningún material y sacando las máscaras de Anne Richards y enviándolos a los viejitos en el centro de cuidados y dando un discurso, y luego regresando al auto y viendo a esta pequeña señora en la vestimenta de casa sentada en la lado de la calle. ¿Lo has oído? La pequeña señora estaba en la vestimenta de casa, probablemente no más alta que cuatro pies ocho, usted sabe, en la vestimenta de casa, tatuada toda la vestimenta de casa casi hasta sus rodillas, y con una máscara de Anne Richards porque eso es lo que le dieron. Y Anne Richards dijo en un discurso que escuché cuando estaba corriendo por el Tribunal de Apelaciones en Corpus Christi, donde dijo, usted sabe, esta señora, esta pequeña señora realmente no entiende las intricacias de una campaña política o qué representa un partido político sobre otro partido político. Lo que ella está pensando, las cosas que le preocupan, las cosas que ella permanece despierta por la noche sobre si o no sus hijos van a tener buenos trabajos, buenos beneficios y alguna seguridad para proporcionarles para el futuro. Lo que ella está pensando es si o no sus nietos van a tener una buena educación pública decente que va a permitirles tener una vida mejor que la que tenían. Lo que ella está pensando es si va a tener la atención médica que desesperadamente necesita en este etapa de su vida, o si va a poder tener incluso un techo sobre la cabeza o comida para comer. Esas son las cosas que le preocupan. Ella no entiende cómo podemos hacer una diferencia. Y luego Anne terminó su discurso diciendo esto, dijo, pero nosotros lo hacemos, nosotros entendemos cómo podemos hacer una diferencia. No podemos, no, no debemos fallarle y a su familia. Y les dejo con eso porque creo que mientras se hagan su trabajo en los años que vienen, sabiendo los corazones que tienen todos los cuatro de ustedes, realmente creo que entienden lo que Anne quería decir y lo que Anne pretendía que nosotros, como líderes de la comunidad, hicieran, pretendía que nosotros entendamos la actitud que deberíamos tener como funcionarios electos, que no se trata de nosotros, no se trata de esta posición, no se trata de esa posición. No se trata de ganar o perder una elección, o cómo se maneja una elección. Se trata de asegurarse de que hagas todo lo posible el resto del tiempo que sirves para asegurar que aquellas personas que les gusta esa pequeña señora y todas aquellas personas que representas en esa comunidad tengan una vida mejor, porque eres el que tiene la capacidad de hacer la diferencia para ellos y no puedes y no debes fallarles. Y gracias por haberme dado la oportunidad de servir, de trabajar con ustedes, y Dios te bendiga a todos los cuatro de ustedes.
Bueno, juez, me gustaría pedirle que me dé la oportunidad de decir algunas palabras. Y quiero que mire hacia mí cuando estoy hablando porque estoy hablando hacia usted. Gracias, David. Usted sabe, vamos a recordarle, juez, ya sea que esté sentado allí o no. Y puedo decirle ahora mismo que he estado recibiendo llamadas telefónicas durante dos días ahora, personas pidiéndome que esté seguro y gracias. Y hay demasiados nombres para enumerar para usted, pero probablemente los llamarán porque eso es lo que les dije que debían hacer, que no necesitaban un mensajero, podrían llamarte. Y por supuesto, le das el salto al mundo entero, así que tienen su salto. Pero ya había planeado en decirle esto. Sé que todos los comisioneros han trabajado muy duro con usted en su propio precincto, pero puedo decirle, voy a emoción sobre esto, puedo decirle que cada vez que veo a nuestros trabajadores trabajando y están trabajando y dando lo mejor que pueden porque tienen el equipo que necesitan, porque incluso usted agregó, ayudó a nosotros con la ayuda del tribunal de comisioneros y votó, nos dio un par de empleados más para hacer su trabajo, los recordaremos y los recordaremos cuando conduzcamos por carreteras que no habían pagado durante años, los recordaremos que estuviste ahí para nosotros. Y los recordaremos cuando la estación de fuego termo se termine y, con mayor probabilidad, nos ayudará a salvar vidas y los recordaremos entonces. Y los recordaremos cuando veamos a niños jugando en las áreas rurales, en los parques, donde las familias tienen un lugar para ir y disfrutar unos de los otros, disfrutar de sus amigos. Pero lo más importante, soy una verdadera creyente de que estos parques que estamos construyendo, y los dedicamos uno a Pete Benavidez esta mañana, y sé que estabas muy cerca de él porque compartiste la misma pasión por los demás como hizo él. También estamos salvando vidas de esta manera, que vamos a tener a los niños ocupados con actividades positivas. Y soy una verdadera creyente de que construyes sobre actividades positivas, y cuando tienes actividades positivas para los niños, el negativo disminuye, y sé eso por hecho porque he trabajado con niños lo suficiente. Así que gracias por los parques que nos han ayudado a construir, no solo en Brownie Park, sino en Precinct Four, que no había oído hablar. Cuando no tengo que sentarme en mi auto durante 45 minutos debido a que la carretera está bloqueada, usted tuvo mucho que hacer con eso. Showó liderazgo, sé que nuestro personal es tremendo en mover esos proyectos que tenemos, pero usted mostró mucho liderazgo en eso. Las trenes no nos detendrán durante 45 minutos y te agradezco por eso, y eso es dentro de unos meses. Y cuando vamos y disfrutamos de los campos secos, estamos siendo conocidos internacionalmente por muchas de las cosas que tenemos y usted ha mostrado liderazgo en eso. Así que hay muchas cosas que nos recuerdan a usted, juez, y personalmente quiero agradecerle por todo lo que has hecho por el condado, pero en particular por Precinct Four. Trabajé duro estos cuatro años, pero usted estaba ahí. Y creo que lo que realmente aprecio más que cualquier otro es que más que una vez podría haber dicho, comisionero, suficiente, usted sabe, este sentido de urgencia, pero usted sabe algo, tenía ese sentido de urgencia, y todo lo que tenía que hacer fue poner algo en la mesa y usted encontraba una forma para que lo hiciéramos, porque usted se preocupa por la gente, y la gente aprecia eso, juez, y te agradezco. Y tengo algo que quiero darle, y esto es personal, esto es para mi.
Bien, voy a entregar una motion a la sala ejecutiva.
Creo que hay más gente que quiera decir algo sobre usted o hacia usted. Obviamente, juez, he estado aquí cuatro años trabajando con usted, y honestamente tendré que decir que cuando vine por primera vez... to say that when I first came in, I wasn't sure how we were going to work together. And you mentioned 99% of the time, we all voted unanimously, which I think is remarkable, as you indicated, it's remarkable, because it doesn't always happen that way. And I will confess that probably that other 1%, I was on the other side, but I do appreciate your ability to look at one issue at a time, and when that issue is done with and voted on, then you move on to the other issue, and it's not carried forward as a problem later on. And I know many times when I'd come into your office, just huffing and puffing and upset about something that, especially the first time I did it, I really wondered, you know, are we going to come out with black eyes or bloody noses or what? But you were, you were willing to sit down and listen to me, you were willing to be open, and we discussed things in a gentlemanly fashion, and I appreciate that. We didn't always agree. We sometimes came out, you voted your way, I voted my way, but it was done amicably. And, you know, when I was campaigning this last March, I went to a house, a fellow who had supported me four years before, and he said, "You know, I can't support you this time." He said, "You haven't done anything," and I looked out, kind of like Edna was talking about, a road that had not been paved in, well, it was actually paved by Tech Stop back in the '30s, but we had overlaid it, it was nice and smooth now, it didn't have the little concrete bumps every 30 feet, you know, and I pointed out some other things that we'd done right there in front of his home, and he said, "No, no, 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 you didn't, what you didn't do, and the reason I'm not going to support you, is you didn't go in there and you didn't beat up on the judge." And I explained to him that I wasn't here to make this body a circus, you know, I was here to get things done for the county, and I realized that you also were here to get things done for the county and for the people of the county, and I appreciate that. All the things Edna iterated, the things you talked about, those are things that we've done, we need to continue doing. We need to remember what has been done through your last 12 years, the rest of us, David six, four for Edna and I. Commissioner Benavides is just getting started, but she's got lots of ideas and lots of things to do. But we need to continue to remember that we need to work together to make it happen for the entire county and for the community that we serve and the people we serve, from one end of the county to the other end of the county. And I appreciate your leadership, and I appreciate your listening, and not coming out with, you know, giving me a black eye or something. I think we've done well as a commission, as a group, and we've got a lot to build on. We've got a really good foundation. I think we'll continue to do well. I want to wish you the best in your endeavors. You'll be able to, obviously, practicing law is much more profitable than serving as a county judge. And I hope you and your family do well, and we'll be there to remind you of the things you've done in the past and to keep those in the forefront. So thank you, Judge.
Can I say something, Judge?
On behalf of Pete, and of course, the entire Benavides family, I want to tell you that you did everything that you possibly could to help Pete bring about the projects that he worked so hard in Precinct One, especially for all those people that were less fortunate. You're to be commended for your leadership, because even though some people did not agree with the way you may have handled things, I know deep down in my heart, and I know that you did what you did for the betterment of this community, and for that I thank you and for being a good friend to Pete myself. God bless you.
I may have just a few words, you know, I will be short. I started thanking you last week, and I really meant what I said last week about the projects that I mentioned then. But I really appreciate the fact that in the six years that I've served here, you've been able to not have me worry so much about providing only for my precinct and giving me the opportunity to work on other issues as part of this commission or as a representative of this commission, and be able to move things forward, you know. You initiated many things, we were able to complement each other in many areas, and, you know, I certainly appreciate all that, you know. And I shared with you privately the other day, the only thing that I regret about you and me is that we really never got to know each other personally, because I know that I'm a good guy, and I know you bound to be a good guy, because everybody else likes you. So, you know, I hope that in the future, that relationship can develop, and I will continue serving, I will continue having my ear open, and my phone line's available to you at any time, anywhere, if I can be of service to you.
Thank you.
Okay? And I wish you nothing but the best, and I wish you and your family a happy new year and a slower-paced new year.
Thank you. Well, I told my pastor that now on Tuesday mornings, I can go play golf with him.
Tuesday morning? That's something.
No, no, he plays golf, him and another priest play golf on Tuesday mornings, and they always used to invite me, and I said, "I can't go, because I got Commissioner's Court," and I wasn't going to move it for that. But anyway, thank you, and again, thank all of you, and thank whoever's watching this on Channel 60. If you're a member of the public out there, thank you for giving me 23 good years of service and the privilege of serving the people of Cameron County. Okay, do I hear a motion to go in executive session? Motion by Commissioner, God's the second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. We're now in executive session. Pursuant to VTC government code section 551.072, 551.072, 2, 551.071, 1B and 2, 551.071, 2. Second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. We're now in regular session. Items number 20A and B, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of real property relating to parking for the Dancy Building renovation project and possible action on deliberation on real property concerning acquisition of right-of-way for West Road Project. Motion to table.
So move.
Neither one were discussed. Motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Item number 19C, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning agreements with Mutual of Omaha for insurance for county employees. Motion to acknowledge report of counsel and to have him proceed as discussed in executive session.
Legal proceedings discussed. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Wood.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Item number...
D.
20D, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Red River Service Corporation's proposed settlement of the old March 15, 2005 contract and authority to accept settlement on a matter which due to the attorney of the governmental body under Texas Department of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas Clearity Conflicts was this chapter. And E, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Red River Service Corporation's proposal for contract extension and consider approving contract on the matter in which duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas Department of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas Clearity Conflicts was this chapter. Motion to authorize, what is the motion?
To authorize the acceptance, the settlement on D. Get it.
Alright, is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Note the abstention of Commissioner Tamayo, she did not participate in any discussions. Item number 20F, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning the possible concession with affiliated management systems, LTD for land in Andy Bowie Park.
If you provide E, if you're D and E separate, D is, you need a motion on E separately to approve the contract extension.
Okay, is there a motion to that effect?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state and I. Both motion carries. Note Commissioner Tamayo's abstention on that. Item number 20F, possible action on deliberation regarding real property concerning possible concession with affiliated management systems, LTD for land in Andy Bowie Park. Motion to...
Acknowledge report of Parks Director. How to make that motion?
Alright, motion by Commissioner Wood.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Item number 20G, possible action on confer with Commissioner's Court Legal Counsel concerning Leonardo Rincones versus Cameron County, Texas, in the 107th District Court, Code Number 2005-0630-57A. For discussion on mediation authority, motion to authorize counsel to proceed as discussed in executive session.
So move.
Second to that issue. Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Back to the regular agenda, there was no public comments. Budget amendments, line item transfers, and/or salary schedules. Mark sent us a copy of a memo, a letter to me with respect to the issue of the certification of revenues, dealing with the $200,000 that was part of the contract extension on the phone services contract on the county jail. And in the December 21 letter, given his waiting on the certification issue, and by the way, we've already gotten $100,000 of that money in from TNEC, TNECnetics, for the TNECnetics agreement. The other $100,000 have not come in yet. He's saying that, that in order to continue operating on the, on the purposes for which that money was allocated by the Commissioner's Court, that we can approve the adoption of a, of a budget amendment, which we're attaching as part of the, of the, that's part of the letter that you've got there, a budget amendment that allows for the use of the interest funds from the settlement money for the meantime, and then once he gets approval to, from the district attorney in the event that he does, that we can reimburse the interest in the settlement or the settlement fund money with the money received from the, from the next TNEC, TNECnetics contract extension. So I would call for then a budget amendment as attached in the letter, attached to the letter that is contained, that I've just handed you.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Tamayo.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Minutes, November 28, December 7, December 12. Is there any questions, concerns?
Move for adoption.
Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state and I.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Item number five, consideration and possible action regarding renewal terms and conditions of the ASO stop-loss in aggregate, stop-loss monthly premiums between United of Omaha Life Insurance Company and Cameron County. The only thing I wanted to, we discussed this in executive session, and I really don't want to get into too many discussions regarding, I just wanted to ask Mark a question on this. What is your understanding in your discussions with Mr. Terry Malick as to who he represents? Does he represent us, or does he represent Mutual of Omaha, or does he represent Stop-Loss Agency? I mean, we're, we're trying to, we don't, we don't know the answer to that question, because we've been told by the insurance company, I'm sorry, yeah, by Mutual of Omaha, that Mr. Johnny Cavassos and Mr. Malick are, are agents. And what is your understanding, Mark, in your dealings with these folks as to who are agents? And the reason we want to know that is because in the terms of the renewal policy that was given to us that, that we never approved, there's increases in terms of the total cost to the county of anywhere between a half a million and a million dollars. Now, it may be that the total premiums went down because of the work that, that, you know, we've been doing internally in the county, but the trouble that I have, and I understand your position, that you didn't understand that to be a contract that they just told us, and I know that Terry Malick stated in open session that there was some kind of a evergreen contract out there, which we have yet to find, and, and we don't agree that there's an automatic renewal.
My understanding is that Mutual of Omaha and the county are under contract, and that Terry Malick was originally an employee of Mutual of Omaha. At some given time during the year, I am told subsequently, that he no longer works for Mutual of Omaha, but works directly for Johnny Cavassos, who works, who represents our interests of Mutual of Omaha. My understanding is that Mr. Cavassos's relationship comes to the county with our agreements with Mutual of Omaha, and that's the only understanding that I have.
So does he represent us, or does he represent Mutual of Omaha?
Well, I'm not really quite sure at this stage who they represent.
Because...
Yeah, and so that's, that's kind of what I'm interested in, because when we did this deal back in 2001, and then again in 2003, the agreement was with Mutual of Omaha. Now, the people who showed up to do enrollments were Kerry Malick under the arrangement with Mr. Cavassos. That's my knowledge. I have no knowledge of any direct relationship between, I mean, I don't know exactly the contractual arrangement between Kerry Malick and Mr. Cavassos, but I know that when Mr. Vireal has meetings with regards to Mutual of Omaha, that Kerry Malick would show up and occasionally Johnny Cavassos would show up, and that's my understanding.
Well, I mean, I think what troubles us is that, is that Mr. Malick came up here and he made some statements at the last meeting that suggested that, you know, that whatever they did in terms of this renewal was an automatic kind of thing, and our conclusions are otherwise. And what troubles us is, is that there's increases in the total medical administrative fee from $29.44 to $32.10. We talked about the stop-loss increases of $30,000 a month, last month.
Right.
There's a, there's an aggregate stop-loss premium rate that drops from 125% to 120. There's, they now will give us applicable aggregate stop-loss reimbursements will be performed at year-end as opposed to monthly. That's a change in the policy, and, and it makes a difference, because they hold on to our money for a year as opposed to reimbursing us if, if the opportunity arises on a monthly basis. They eliminated a bunch of procedures that are covered from the outpatient surgical procedures. They, they now are retaining pharmaceutical rebates that could average anywhere from $140,000 to double that amount that, that, that we now are, are not receiving. And they're saying that the ASO fee has been accredited according to this rebate charge, and so the ASO agreement will be amended. It sounds like we're getting increased charges as opposed to decreased charges, and then...
When Mr. Malick approached me, he handed me this sheet.
And I'm not, I'm not concerned about whether or not you knew what you were being given, what I'm trying to find out is...
What I'm finding out in your attorney's documentation is there was a third sheet involved in this that was not supplied to me, and so...
Which is the middle sheet.
It was the middle sheet that had significant terms and conditions in there. Now, typically, we do get copies of contracts that show how much we're supposed to pay and to act on accordingly. I mean, that's the way this setup works, and it's the way it's worked over the last three years.
Mark, excuse me, so you had two pages missing?
No, I had, there were three pages that I'm aware of now. The first page had rates, and they, based on how we're supposed to set up on a per-capitation amount. The last page didn't have any documentation on it except for where, you know, I'm signing, and he said, "This is your acknowledgement of you receiving this." And it's fairly typical of how rates are applied. That third rate, I mean, that third page, which is two of three, that was never included in what I'd seen.
But didn't you notice that it was missing?
You know, at the time...
Because those pages say one of three, two of three.
Right. At the time, I didn't notice that it said one of three and three of three, and because at the time it was presented to me, we were in a major move from this billing, the other billing... to the, the other billing to this. I looked at it, the rates all looked similar to what they had presented to me earlier. And as you can see, uh, on the 26th, I think, or 23rd document, that none of the specific terms were on the front sheet. I mean, it was just a list of rates. And then they say, "Well, okay, this is for you to acknowledge this." That second sheet, the middle sheet, I, I did not notice that it did say one of three and three of three. You know, I looked at that and I said, "The rates are the same." My files are in a box, they're in transit. I didn't have them necessarily to review. I knew that we are already in a plan year. We've already three or four weeks into the plan year. And so I knew that, and I handed it over to my assistant saying, "Okay, you need to prepare for when the billing comes in and match it against this." Because often, these billing rates are not changed months into the document or plan year.
You referring to the one that was dated September 26th?
Right. Initially. And then the one that came on October 3rd.
And then there was one October 9th.
Yeah.
Which was the same thing? He only gave you two of three sheets then?
I, I never saw the middle sheet. I mean, I, there are two sheets. In fact, I talked to him, I said, "You know, Mr. Malick, I never saw that third sheet." He goes, "That's right."
Then the issue that the judge, I think, is trying to get at a little bit is who is Kerry Malick working for? Uh, he signed both of these.
Actually, they're signed by a guy named Corey Michelson, I think.
Is that who that is?
Okay. I thought it was Kerry. It looks like Kerry.
No. It's actually signed by a electronic signature by a Mutual of Omaha representative.
Okay.
The signature you're seeing there is not Kerry Malik's, it's Mutual, it's Kerry Michael, I mean, it's a Corey Michaels.
Corey Michael.
I mean, by looking at it, you really can't tell.
I don't know what Kerry Malik is.
But it also, and also in the agreement, it says add HRH of San Antonio's co-broker. That's Kerry Malick, right?
That's Kerry Malick.
I imagine. Is that on the second sheet?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I've seen the documents that your attorney presented to me yesterday.
And, and the reason, I think, that what troubles us is that why would we have to approve a broker for Mutual of Omaha? That's their deal.
I agree with you on that.
Mutual of Omaha hires their own brokers and so forth and, and if, and if, if Mutual of Omaha is, is negotiating these terms with their own broker rather than negotiating with us, but telling us that they're negotiating it with us, I'm assuming you didn't negotiate any of these terms, right?
None. None. They're presenting to me in a fashion saying, "Here are the rates, be ready for the billing, they should match up."
Yeah.
Uh, you know, just in mind, keep in mind, we had not changed our specific stop-loss rate. You know, there, where this is presented to me was, hey, this is notification of the rates, we're getting ready to start billing.
And, and the thing is that, that I think troubles us is that, you know, they're using these terms about negotiations, but they're, it's like they're negotiating with themselves to our detriment.
Right.
You know, and then handing us a contract, telling us that you got to pay this at a point in time where, you know, you know, we, we, they don't even present it to us for approval. We're just told, "This is what you got to pay," and tell you to issue the payment on that. And the increases for the county, I mean, I couldn't understand this. I mean, if he is our agent, let me tell you something, we need to fire him as quickly as possible because he's not acting in our interest.
And I understand, Judge.
But, but let me finish. But the thing is that, you know, he gets up there and with a straight face tells us that, "What are we complaining about? Our rates have gone down, right?"
Overall costs.
Overall costs have gone down and we should be happy about that. But he's not the reason why they've gone down. We're the reason that they've gone down. We've, we're the reason because of all the policies that have been implemented in this county to get this insurance, get a handle on this insurance policy. It could have gone down significantly, our costs, if we didn't have to pay all these amounts that we were, we were not told we had to pay, who supposedly were negotiated by someone who claims that they negotiated with our agent, who we claim is not our agent, but is their agent. So they're, they're negotiating with one another, I guess.
I, I want to... However it is, it was never brought to us to even know it being negotiated.
In fact, in 2004 and 2005, it looks like it was never brought to you. And what, and in your packet there provided by your attorney, there is a 2005 document that was emailed to me, myself and Mr. Villarreal. And when I printed it out, I noticed that there were a number of terms and conditions associated with that document. And as you can see on the cover of that, I said, "To Doug Wright," or "To Doug," I think, and sent it out there for him to review. That itself was not even brought to the Commissioner's Court.
Did you ever see that movie Lord of the Rings?
No, I actually haven't seen any of the Rings.
Who saw Lord of the Rings? Everybody saw Lord of the Rings. You got to have seen Lord of the Rings, it's a great movie. There's a guy named Gollum. What's his name? Gollum? Gollum? The little guy that used to be a human being at one time? Is it Gollum? Come on. Y'all remember it.
I don't know. I haven't seen it.
Gollum, right? And Gollum, Gollum negotiates with himself about whether to kill the good guy in the movie. And he talks to himself and then he talks to himself and he goes back and forth and he talks to himself. He's got two different personalities. And then he finally, the guy, the bad guy, makes the decision to kill the good guy at, at, at the end of the movie. They, then in the negotiations, the bad guy wins the negotiation because he did. I, I get the feeling that that's what happened here, you know? Mutual of Omaha is negotiating with itself to decide what to do to us, you know, without telling us about it.
Well, I'm not sure Mutual of Omaha is actually doing the negotiation. I mean...
Well, they are because we're not...
It's to their benefit.
You told me, you told me, Mark, that they didn't negotiate with you.
No.
They didn't negotiate with Mike. They didn't negotiate with Mr. Villarreal. They certainly didn't negotiate with my office or any of these members of these Commissioners' Court. So the only person they could have negotiated with was them, with their own broker themselves.
Well, you're right.
To their advantage.
Broker and, and Mutual and HRH. And I don't know where Cavassos Insurance fits.
And who pays, who pays HR, HRH? Do you know?
Uh, I actually don't have any direct knowledge. I can guess.
Do we pay them?
No. All we pay is Mutual of Omaha.
But any, is any increase in fees that we pay now to Mutual of Omaha attributed to bringing in this co-broker?
I don't have a knowledge of that.
Who would know that?
Uh, Mutual of Omaha and the broker.
But they've never told us that they're going to increase our fees because they're going to bring this guy in as a co-broker?
No. I don't have knowledge of that.
And what does a co-broker do that the broker doesn't already do?
I don't know. I mean, I don't have knowledge of that.
I really have a concern that on our staff, there's no one that really knows what's going on.
Well, I don't know the financial arrangements between Johnny Cavassos Insurance Company and HRH. I don't know that. All I know is what we pay Mutual of Omaha. What they do with their funds is, I have no knowledge.
Well, I think as a court, we need to start finding out who we're going to hold accountable and do something about it.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Do you hear a motion to acknowledge discussion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state an aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Um, six, discussion and action regarding certification of additional revenues and direction regarding unbudgeted and over-budget accounting expenditures. Do you hear a motion to table that?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Tamayo. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state an aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Seven, consideration approval of the creation of an office administrator for Constable Precinct Two, Department. Is the constable still here? This is, uh, out of Fund 90 money?
Yes, Judge. This would not be any cost to the taxpayers.
All right. Okay. Do you hear a motion to approve that?
Mr. Gomez, can you explain this, uh, agenda item to us in more detail?
Okay. This is, I'm requesting an administrator position to help me track the funds that are coming in through Fund 90. Uh, since I implemented a patrol division to my department, we've, we've been having to come across traffic stops that have resulted in seizures. And, uh, working with the district attorney's office, we've had money that been awarded to my department. And this administrator position, I've, I've been trying to grab resources wherever I can. And one of the biggest concerns I have is manning the substation full-time in Cameron Park. The administrator is actually going to be used to man the office at least a larger portion of the time, if not full-time, aside from the officers that have already put to work that office the most of the time that they can. Because I end up in a position where I have to keep pulling them out to work on the street or they get assigned to calls or, or to work with the task force or wherever it is that they get pulled to work. So I've been trying to man the office, but I still keep having gaps there.
One of the complaints that I heard during the campaign in Cameron Park was that that office was always closed because your folks are always out in the street, you know, serving warrants, picking up people, patrolling, and that they really need a permanent presence. And it's a beautiful office that's just not being utilized the way it needs to be utilized.
And I will tell you that the people in Cameron Park will go to it. I know that my secretary goes out every Wednesday morning and spends three to four hours every morning in Cameron Park at the cultural center. And people know she's going to be there and they come with their, you know, issues and their ideas and their thoughts and what things they need to do. So if there's someone there at that station, people will be using it very regularly. You've got 7,000 people there and, you know, that's larger than the town of Los Presas.
We spent almost $100,000 for that substation and it's brand-new.
A lot of use of it.
I agree with you, Judge and Commissioners, and that's, I assure you, this has been one of my concerns. And as you all know, I requested an additional employee that the county was not able to fund. So I've managed to find the funds through another way. And that's why I'm requesting the creation of the administrator position.
Now, I see... Yes. That you have an agreement with the DA's office, that you work on the task force with them, or some of your officers work with them on their task force to enable to be able to acquire some of these funds?
That's correct.
I, I have a question. It's listed as a temporary position. Is there a timeline on this or...
Well, I'm hoping to be able to fund it for the remainder of the year. Obviously, if the funds are not available for me to continue funding this position or if it's not worth funding it, then I'm just going to disregard the position and, and the employee will be informed of that, that decision. But we do have other pending funds that we're expecting. I see no problem with, with having to continue to fund it at a later time if, if, if I feel that...
It's temporary because it depended upon Fund 90 funds.
Exactly.
So that's the reason for the temporary position?
Yes.
I just wanted to know what the timeline was, if it was a temporary position.
Yes. It, it would be a temporary position.
Do you hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Benavides. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by state an aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Eight, consideration approval of resolution adopting...
Thank you.
Thank you, Constable.
Thanks, Constable.
Consideration and approval of...